Reboarded trustees to order. And I'll just make a couple of comments before we proceed with the roll call. In accordance with Public Act, Public Act 101-0640, this meeting will be held, is being held remotely. Members of the public can view and listen via go to meeting or by calling in as described in the agenda that's at DGlibrary.org. And also they can submit comments as described on the agenda. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Doherty.
Here.
Trustee Gagani.
Here.
Trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yeah.
President Graber.
Here, thank you very much, Kaitlyn. And at this point, I'd like to welcome our visitors to our virtual meeting. Thank you very much for your interest in the library. We're now onto Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of the May 27, 2020 Minutes. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes?
Okay. I will move that we approve them as presented.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. And as Julie noted in an email from a week or so ago, pursuant to one of the governor's directives, we'll proceed with all of our votes being by roll call. So Caitlyn, could you proceed with the roll call, or the, the, the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. The minutes have been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Five, Financial Matters. Julie, do you want to let us know how we're doing?
Sure, we are 42% through the year approximately. The revenues, you will see the first small payment of property taxes on there. That is typical, we usually start seeing those big ones rolling in, in the June financials. So we are also still waiting on the 2020 Illinois Public Library Per Capita Grant from the state of Illinois. We have been assured that those will be paid according to the awards that they made. But they just don't know when. The state is, as always, a little bit behind on their payments. But we do trust that we will be getting that in. So we're doing great on the revenue side despite the rollbacks that were unexpected as far as things like room rentals and fines. We're still on track with our revenues. On the expenditures side, I do want to let you know that there are some oddball suppliers in the list of invoices and you will see those continuing. That is Ian buying PPE from whoever has it in stock. So there are some vendors we've never used before and may never use again. But that's what we're doing is, is buying things like the alcohol sanitizing wipes that can be used particularly on electronics. We've been trying to get from anywhere we possibly can, anybody who hasn't been stocked. The maintenance supplies line, 5210. Everybody, every other department's supplies line has been underspent because we haven't been in the office, obviously, we're not buying all supplies. But that's where the PPE is coming from. So just so you know, the maintenance supplies budget will be significantly over budget. So if you see that particular line rising, that's what it is. We do expect, hope, pray, for the offset with the FEMA grants that will pay us back for some of our costs related to COVID. Jen Fredericks, our Assistant Director, is working on that grant. So we are hopefully going to get a little, at least a little bit of reimbursement there. Other than that, I will take any questions that you have about the financials.
I just had a quick question on, I think it's line 5420, it's insurance policies. I noticed that was at like 117%. Was that just like a front loaded payment?
Yes, and yes, there was an additional coverage that was added this year. That is a crisis protection coverage that was unexpected. And that actually covers things like, in the event of something really horrible like a, you know, a shooting or whatever, that protection includes things like the counseling for all the staff and temporary relocation and funeral expenses and things like that. So we really felt that it was a, a good coverage for us to have and to have in our package. But it did take us over our allotment. And so where we are, you will see in the 2021 preliminary budget, there is a significant increase that both covers the inclusion of that in the new budget as well as any possible increases.
That premium's essentially done now, right?
Yeah, 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 yes, that's, that's one of those front end loaded, beginning of the year, now it's done.
Okay. And then have you been able to get a sense of, I know it's like early, but a sense of kind of the additional sort of PP, PPE expenditures kind of on a monthly basis going forward, or is it just too fluid at this point?
It's really fluid at this point. We basically doubled the maintenance supplies line for 2021. But Ian was able to do that by making some other adjustments. So it, he was, all of our department managers, when we get to the preliminary budget, you'll see they were great about all of our non-personnel lines were either flat or the smallest of increases. So we really tried to tighten things up.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions regarding Agenda Item Number Five, the Financial Matters?
None.
I'll move to approve the financials as presented.
Do we have a second?
Yes. I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the Financial Matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlyn, could you please proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. The Financial Matters as presented have been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Julie, or Jen, or Caitlyn, do we have any public comment on Agenda Items?
Jen, you're muted.
I'm sorry, there's nothing through email that we've received.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm assuming then that that's also on Agenda Item Number Seven. We have no, just maybe confirm that there's no public comment on any other library business?
No comments coming from email.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now on to Agenda Item Eight A, Resolution 2020-1, Approving and Adopting the Revised Anti-Discrimination and Anti-Harassment Policy. Julie, do you want to give us the background here?
Yes, this was a, as the result of the new Public Act, Illinois Workplace Transparency, that included elected official, unelected official harassment or discrimination within the government entities' anti-harassment policies. And so that, that Public Act did say that that needed to be passed by resolution or ordinance. So that's what we're doing. And the, there is a marked up copy first in your packet and then the resolution. But as President Graber pointed out, in the Exhibit A of the resolution, there is a typographical error. So we will be asking for a amended, ah, an amended a version that has the correction according to the marked up version that is first in your packet.
Okay, thank you. And I did review this, it looked to me like it was very much a resolution to comply with Illinois state law essentially.
Yeah.
Does anyone have a motion to approve Resolution 2020-1 with a slight amendment, slight revision? It's, it's the, the word employee, just removing that from the second line under 3.39-4. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-1 with a small correction of employee.
I believe it, it's the word employer should be removed.
Employer removed.
Through, yeah, yes.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve 2020-1 with that slight typographical change that has been seconded. Caitlyn, could you please proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda Item Eight A with a slight revision has been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Eight B, Capital Needs Assessment 2020 Update. Julie, do you want to give us the background on this Agenda Item?
Well, most of the heavy lifting on this Agenda Item were actually done by Building Operations Director Ian Noor, who made all of the substantive changes and updates to the Capital Needs Assessment Report. As you know, that was originally done in 2017, the, the original report. In 2018, the board approved moving some of those projects around, but maintaining essentially the same project list. This is an update that includes all of the projects that Ian has been able to accomplish outside of the library's capital replacement fund. And in addition, also updating some costs. As you know, we had the VAV box replacements this year that came in above the estimates. And also inclusion of two new high dollar figure things that were not in the original assessment. One is the erect, electrical relay panel replacement. This is something that was not originally contemplated in the report. However, we have since found that our electrical panels are, do have breakers and parts that are obsolete. And so he cannot get replacement parts at this point. And that would be bad because that would be all the electrical into the building. So that is a $75,000 add to 2020. There is also, as we have discussed in the past, the elevator modernization that was not included in the original. And that we had actually noted from the very beginning with that Capital Needs Assessment, that the elevator had not been included. So this does include the elevator modernization in 2022, I believe. And I apologize for the spreadsheets. I know they're a lot easier to read when they're the 11 by 17. If you print them out, you can kind of cut and paste and put them together so that it's actually a little easier to read. But I did do the summary for you that brings those all together. In the end, plus this year's masonry projects came in significantly under budget. As you all know, we're coming in just over half of what was originally budgeted for this year's project. So that is really going to help us with the addition of these two projects. And it really does offset it. We do have the updated VAV boxes and those other costs in there. But we still manage with the same annual transfer of $350,000 through the end of the 2027 time horizon. This allows us to do all of the projects, knock wood that they come in as budgeted, and still have over a million dollars in the library capital replacement fund in 2027. So that the, we have that nest egg to start thinking about the next round and what is needed next. And if, you know, eventually there'll need to be interior renovations again, all of those kinds of good things. So this gets us to our goal without having to change the plan, but it, or the funding plan. But it does kind of take some, some changes along the way in the different yearly expenses. So I've put it to you for approval. I did note in the packet that you can find the original Capital Needs Assessment Report as well as the 2018 update on DGlibrary.org/Transparency. So this 2020 update would replace the 2018 on there.
I will just.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of comments and not really questions. This is interesting to me because I think this is one of like the first sort of major endeavors that I was involved with as a member of the library board. So it's, it's very gratifying to see it sort of play out and to kind of see, you know, see it in action and seeing it being implemented, the new lighting and the new, you know, just taking care of, taking care of the space in the way that it should be taken care of. The, the one line that still makes me just, I wouldn't say nervous, but just, you know, I kind of have my eye on it, is the 2021 where we get down to $128,000. I, I do recall that that originally, I think, was a negative number. And we knew that we would, you know, we would plan for it, which 128,000 is better than negative. But it also, you know, we have some time between now and then, a little bit, to try to make sure that that, you know, happens. And also just when we get bids for the, you know, the big ticket items like the, you know, the roof and things like that, that, you know, hopefully, hopefully Ian can work his magic on those as well.
Yes, we really hope that, that all of those estimates come in, that we estimate it high or correctly. We don't want to have underestimated anything.
Right.
Well, the roof and the VAV boxes are big ones. But we don't have a whole lot of choice. And we just have to be real careful with the bidding on that and keep our fingers crossed. But, but it's, as you pointed out, the original plan was to have a negative number in there. So we're making progress.
Thanks to Ian, it's, it's all Ian. He has done so much in-house and done so much to make sure that our projects are done as efficiently as possible. And again, he, he tries to do as much as he can himself overseeing projects and that sort of thing. So it really does make a big difference and he has been a godsend.
Yep.
What timing in 2021 with the VAV box or this year? I'm just wondering if there could be any supply chain issues with COVID or anything? I just wanted to mention that to keep it in mind in case.
Yeah, the VAV boxes are actually happening piecemeal. If you look back at the, the things, there's, there's a small increment in, starting this in 2020 and going all the way through 2027. So we're doing a few of the VAV boxes each time. We have been able to, we have a shift date on those VAV boxes for 2020. So fingers crossed that those actually come in on time. The electrical relay panel will be similar. And again, with the roofing project in particular, we're going, probably going to go through that same process that we did with the exterior, the masonry, where, and the HVAC, where we actually bid that project in the wintertime so that we're the first one on the docket in the spring. So you will be seeing that.
Okay, do we have any other, any additional questions or comments regarding the Capital Needs Assessment 2020 Update?
I think it looks good.
I agree. We have a motion to approve the Capital Needs Assessment 2020 Update.
So move.
I will second.
Okay, thank you, swapped up. We have a motion to approve the Capital Needs Assessment 2020 Update that has been seconded. Caitlyn, could you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the Capital Needs Assessment 2020 Update. We're now on to Agenda Item Eight C, which is up for discussion, the 2021 Preliminary Budget Drafts. Julie, do you want to get us started on, on this Agenda Item?
Phew, that is a big Agenda Item. This is, as we have noted before the meeting actually started, one of the largest packets that we've ever put out. We did eight versions of the budget for the board as requested. We have the salary and wage increases at a 1.9% increase across the board, which would essentially be the salary schedule, our re-benchmarking of our salary structure for the year and would be just a single flat rate. And then we also have a 3% wage and salary increase on the expenditure side that would allow at least a small merit increase. At this point, the full implementation of the merit increase system is probably not realistic for 2021. I would, however, like to be able to reward some of our staff who were our essential personnel throughout the COVID crisis. And really, they were the ones who worked tirelessly, no matter if we were closed or open. They were still there, they were still going into the library, they were still making sure people were paid. The library was clean, the book drops were done, the folks who needed to be in and supervised were supervised. So I would like to be able to reward those folks. So we also did levy side at a 0% increase, one per, or I should say a flat levy, 1%, 2%, and 3%. So that's eight different iterations of the budget included in your packet. So the first 1.9% salaries and 0% levy starts on page nine of the board's packet. Then the next version with the 1% levy starts on page 31. The 1.9% and with a 2% levy is on page 53. Then the next at the 3% levy and the 1.9% salaries is on page 75. So, and then proceeding through page 97 for 3% salary, 0% levy. Page 119 at the 1% level with 3% salary. Page 141 for the 2% levy and page 163 for the highest, that's the 3% personnel and 3% levy. Now, the difference is top to bottom between the two expenditure levels is less than $35,000 between 1.9% salary and wage increase and 3% salary and wage increase. All other expenditures are equal across the board. However, you have to remember that things like IMRF, Social Security and, and Medicare are, sorry, brain freeze, are all tied to salary, so those also proportionately change. We did do a 15% increase across the board on all insurances. We do not have, we're too soon in our processes with both the liability insurance and our employee benefits to get anywhere near an actual figure. So that 15% is a safety net for us. We have also done an employee poll of any anticipated changes to employee benefits by our existing employees and put in an increment for any turnover that we may have where they may change benefits. Because we do pay a significant amount of up to family coverage for our employees, the difference between among the levels that an employee can choose is over a $15,000 swing. So that's something that we try to accommodate for at least one or two employees doing, or turnover doing that during the year. So it's one of the biggest things that we don't have control of. On the revenue side, the difference between a 0% levy increase and a 3% levy increase is just over $166,000 for the year. So again, that, that level is, it's not a huge amount between 0 to 3%. Now, one of the things that we did take into account is we used from our financial management plan from 2017, the 1% EAV increase. They use that throughout the financial management plan where they told us that that's a, a pretty standard. You can pretty much expect that unless you're in a severe decline. So we did use that as our given. And that does offset part of the taxpayer impact. So anytime, you know, those, the tax rate and the EAV are inverse. So whenever your EAV goes up, your tax rate goes down. So bear that in mind as you're looking at these different levels. Again, the non-personnel lines are actually a decrease of half a percent in all drafts. Thank you to our department management. Those managers did a great job of finding places where they could just cut back a little bit or move things among lines so that they could really hold the line on non-personnel costs. And, oh, and the one other thing to remember on the personnel costs is we did see a fairly significant increase in our IMRF employer rate for 2021. That is set by statute, something we don't have control of. So it's just another thing we have to factor in. So our current tax rate is .2103, that's 21 cents per $100 of valuation, for those of you playing along with the calculators. Our highest levy estimate at the 3% level, the estimated tax rate is approximately 2145. So 20, about 21 and a half cents for, per $100 of valuation. And at the lowest levy, that 0% level, if the EAV can, goes up by the 1%, would be 2082, so it would be a slight decrease. And, and again, that's tied to. And, and again, that's tied to the estimated 1% EAV. So at the highest level, our average homeowner would see an increase of $4.73 to the average homeowner for their tax bill for the year. At that lowest rate, what we're looking at as flat, but with the EAV, it actually makes a little bit of a decrease, would be $2.35 in savings over the previous year for the average homeowner. So you can kind of see how that, that EAV does take it down a little, even though you're saying you're flat. On the library fund balance, every single one of these, even at the 3% salary increase at a zero levy, at a flat levy, we still are estimating that the library fund balance at year end in 2021 would be over $650,000. Now, according to our financial reserves policy, the library's level for, the financial reserves annually is about $450,000. And I did include the way that's calculated. So that we are still well under, well above the library fund balance that we need, even if these estimates are a little bit off. So I just wanted to let you know that regardless of which level, we are still within the financial reserves policy. And what else did I want to say? Oh, I also wanted to answer a question that Jonathan had about the levy itself. You will see that in the levy calculations, that the 2019 levy and 2020 levies, it, it actually shows a little bit higher percentage than what you had passed. That is because the county tax extension office does include a multiplier to the levy that you pass that is, accounts for the collection. So whatever levy you guys approve, the extend, the levy extension will be a little bit more. And that's just one of the vagaries of the system. Does anyone have any questions for me? I know it's a lot to take in.
I, I do.
I don't even know.
Does anyone else want to start, or?
I just got a, a general question. How the, how the $11 minimum wage, I know it's in there. Did, was that a, was that a big hit?
It, it's a, it's a, it's a hit, it's a hit. That, it's, it is. But we've also, with doing the salary structure changes that we made, it's minimized as our hit. So only the people in that pay grade will receive, they'll be bumped up to the $11 and then receive the increment on top of that. That's, that's the way we calculated it for now. And that also allows us to begin hiring in that category at the $11 minimum wage with the people who have seniority making that little bit increment more. So that, that was kind of the, the idea behind calculating it that way.
Yeah, I think that's the right thing to do. I'm, I'm in favor of that, raising the minimum wage. I'm just talking about, we do have to pay for it, but, but we should. I just want to make that clear.
And I'll, I'll just make a couple of just general comments to, as far as like the timing, I believe we have to approve this at our August meeting, is that correct, Julie? So I think, I think today is kind of the general, you got, you know, a lot of paperwork to work through. And then having a more, I think, maybe substantive discussion in July. And then be, and we may be ready to approve it in July, but I always like to go right to the end because then we have, or as late as we can go, just so that we have as much information as possible before we approve it. Because we already have to approve it significantly in advance of having kind of all of the information. We might as well have as much information as we have. I just had a couple of other just general comments, Julie. The, well, we know the EAV by August or when? Is that something that comes up after we approve the budget as well? I can't remember.
Yeah, and, and what we do is we, we're normally bugging the village to find out what they're using, what they're going to use in their budget estimates for the next year. So we're, we're always going, so, so what do you think? What do you think? Because they're usually pretty good. We do get some information from the township that does help us make that estimate. Now, according to the township, we should see a decent increase, probably more than 3%. But again, we want to be conservative. Whenever I show you preliminary budgets, it's always conservative on the revenue side.
Right. And then just on the, on the staff raises, and I'll just ask a couple of questions on this. Can you, well, can you remind me of where we got the one? I know you told me this before, but where did we get the 1.9% from?
That is actually the HR source, the HR consulting firm that we use. That is their estimate for the re-benchmarking for 2021.
Okay, and then I think this is my, my last question on this is that if we went with the 1.9, like the HR sources kind of proposal, do you, is there anything separate that we need to do to make sure that you have the discretion to do what you indicated previously, where there may be some people who, you know, you would like to reward for kind of the service that they've provided, kind of over and above, you know, really the, you know, what they were required to do at this point in time?
Yeah, especially if you give me that direction now or in July, I can go ahead and do the personnel cost with that factored in. So it would give me the latitude to be able to make, to, to put those in, in the salary and wage lines.
I mean, just, I, I don't know what other people's thoughts are, but if, if, I, I just want to make sure that you have that authority to do that.
Amen.
Regardless of which model we ultimately approve of. So I don't know what, any other trustees have thoughts on that, on that particular point?
Well, the best is yet to come with this crisis, I think. I mean, we've been closed, now we're opening. And Julie was talking about the, the extremely high level of skill that was shown and hard work. As I say, the best is yet to come now. So that's not a past tense thing, it's almost a future thing. And I definitely want to have that in the budget.
So to that point as, as well, what John asked about, because we don't see any numbers about, around giving out the discretionary amounts, I think it would be helpful. I don't want you to run eight scenarios with those numbers. I find like the first page, page one, the easiest where you see a variance from $297,000 to $464,000. That kind of sums it up for me. As you said in your talking points, and it's written right above, there's $166,000 from the lowest to the highest difference there. But I guess if you're going to tell us what that discretionary number might be, 50,000, you know, then that makes that from $166,000 variance to 100, and, I mean, to 200,000, right?
And, and I can definitely do that for the next iteration as I start. If, if that's the direction you would like me to go, we can take that further and look at what that impact would actually be. There are some metrics that I've been thinking of for using, for determining which staff are eligible for that additional increment and, and what that should look like.
Yeah, I always think that's a, I think that that is an appropriate way to, to reward people. So I'm in agreement with that, yes.
Well, thank you for putting all of this information together. It's all very helpful. Are there any additional questions or comments? I would just say for everyone to try to, I'll make, I'll make one last comment and then, you know, if there are any other, any other comments. The one, the, the one point, I think I talked about this last month, is, is trying to, to keep our levy kind of percentage increase as low as, as low as we reasonably can do, just given kind of the, you know, kind of the entirety of kind of the economic situation at the moment. And one point that I really appreciate, and I've appreciated this year in and year out, is that we're staying significantly under, as of, as of today, we're significantly under our proposed budget for 2020, which I think is, it's partly due to kind of the situation of being closed, but also just, I think it's good fiscal management on behalf of the library. And so the, the idea of, you know, if, if we come in at 300,000 under budget, then we have essentially some more cushion to, you know, maybe keep the budget a little bit lower next year. Starting, our fund balance is starting at a higher level.
Yes, and again, I tried to, I always try to estimate. So the estimated attainment for 2020, I tried to keep that at a higher level than what we're actually seeing right now, just to make sure that whatever we decide to do, that we've hit that target, that, that our estimated attainment for 2020 is spot on or was overestimated on expenditures.
Thank you. So I'm, anyone else, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment that I, I thought also, thanks again, Julie, for putting all of this together. It's a tremendous amount of work. But I also found that the page, I guess it's the first version of it, is page 25, that, that kind of outlines the EAV and the levy change over, you kind of that three-year period. Also, it'd be very helpful in thinking about impact on the village and impact on homeowners and the perceptions thereof. I haven't, you know, personally attended village board meetings recently, but I, you know, I, I understand that there's going to be belt tightening across the board, and that's something that we'll have to consider as, as kind of a player in the community and, and a partner really with the village. So I, so I like looking at that page and kind of understanding, okay, well, what does this look like compared to last year? And what does it look like for the, for the homeowner as well? It's kind of in terms of what, what are we asking?
I'm glad you find that, all that useful. But I always find it very use, very instructive to take that levy all the way through the estimated tax rate and applying it to that average homeowner so that you really get a sense of what, what our homeowners will see on their tax bill, because all they see is the tax rate. That's it. They, they see last year's tax rate and this year's tax rate, and that's all that comes on their tax bill. So I want to be very aware of what that looks like and to make sure that you guys are aware of what that looks like as we go through this process.
And you've heard me say it before, so I won't belabor it, but I'm, I'm looking forward two or three years at least. And there are a lot of factors that are unknown. I mean, what's the EAV going to do as we come out of the pandemic? What's the unemployment rate going to do? What are the sales tax revenues going to be? That doesn't affect us, but it affects.
The village very much.
The village is projecting that they're, they're not as, quite as bad off as they feared they might be, but they're still hurting a lot because as you, and we talked about before, their reliance on the property tax is much lower than us in the 30s or something and percentage wise. They, they rely on sales taxes and use taxes and hotel taxes. Hotel taxes are down 93%. Probably not a surprise, but, and sales taxes are down significantly. So they're going to have to belt tighten and make those up and so forth. So we need to keep that in mind, but I want to keep the curve kind of smooth. If we're going to have to go either significantly up or heaven forbid significantly down somewhere over the next few years, I want to start it now. I want to smooth so we don't have too much all at once. That's my general philosophy. So I'm going to be looking real closely at this, but I, I certainly want to reward our staff. And I want to remain competitive with our staff. And I emphasize that word.
And I believe that our, the compensation system overhaul that we did last year really does address all of the kind of equity and, and keeping our salaries in right where we want with that compensation philosophy that we passed. So we're, we're not the highest and we're not the lowest, but we're really competitive and we give good benefits. That, that's our competitive advantage. And so we are, we have really made sure that our compensation structure bears that out. And also on the EAV factor, I do want to remind you that EAV is calculated on valuations from the past three years. So we do get, we get a heads up. So if it's, yeah, if it starts to go down, it doesn't impact us. It's not a straight on impact, it's a gradual. As, as Dave said, with the wanting to, to smooth, well, that kind of smoothes any impact of property tax values going down because it is a three-year valuation rather than a straight line.
But in order to stay smooth, I don't think I want to go down too much yet.
Okay, any additional questions or comments regarding the preliminary budget drafts? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. We're now on to agenda item 8D, the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan.
Can I just, can I just ask, is there, is there a particular level you would like me to continue with the levy projections? Is, what are you comfortable with? Do, yeah, yeah, I, I want to not do eight versions next time.
Right, I think that makes complete sense because my thought is I'm looking for not the one area to carry all the burden, not the levy to be at zero and a 3% increase for the salary because then the library is carrying all that burden, or vice versa, 3% levy and a 1.9%. Those two are the outliers. The, I'm looking for a number in the middle to take into consideration the economic environment that we're all in, both as employees and as property taxpayers. Where some of the numbers, the 1.9 salary and 2% with EAV, those almost negate each other, right?
Right, I, I think the, to me, and again, I don't, I don't necessarily want to take anything off the table. I mean, I don't, I don't know, but like the, just because we have, I guess maybe there won't be that much of the changes in two months, but. of changes in two months, but the fact that we have kind of HR source recommending the 1.9%, I think it's really hard to, as much as I love the staff, it's hard to justify sort of going off of that number higher in this particular environment. I actually could see justification for going lower, which I don't want to do, you know, which I don't think we want to do. And so the idea of focusing more on the 1.9% on the salaries, making sure that you have, or at least seeing what your numbers would look like as far as allowing for some discretionary, you know, amounts to employees. I think that's kind of where I'm at on the, you know, right now on the kind of salary side. For me, on the, on the, on the revenue side, I'm not like, again, this is just kind of where I'm at currently, is not at 3%. It's, it's at where it's the zero to two, maybe, you know, in that range. Kind of, kind of keeping an eye on what's going on with the village. And so that's, that's kind of where I'm at at the moment.
Do you want me to do zero and 2% and figure you guys can, can kind of find your own, in your brain, the happy medium on the 1%? Or do you just, what, what would you like to see in July?
That's fine, because that cuts it from, you know, this down to, you know, three versions or whatever it would be instead of eight. At least that's my opinion. I'm open to other thoughts, of course.
I just want to remind us that we're talking about 1.9 plus the
The discretionary.
The discretionary.
Right. I agree.
And I will be able to pull out and tell you what the discretionary version is.
Right, right.
What, what number that comes out to.
I would concur with what you just said, Jonathan. We could, we could go, we can extrapolate. If the numbers, if we did zero and two against the 1.9, we can extrapolate a little up if we decide we want to be generous and go to three, or extrapolate to one, just to save a little paper.
Whichever version feels right for you guys.
A smaller version.
I'd like to see 1.9 and two, maybe zero. I don't know.
So the 1.9% salary wage increase with the discretionary raises included and a number pulled out, so you know exactly what that is, and then a 0% levy and a 2% levy. Does that?
Yeah.
Does that thumbs up? Okay, good.
Wow.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're now on to agenda item 8D, the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan. I believe this is a continuation of the plan, but would you like to?
Yeah. So, so where we are today. So we are contemplating what is phase three of the library's reopening plan. We are looking to make an official announcement on Monday about that limited public service, limited hours reopening. Our plan so far is that we will be open from 10 to 7, Monday through Friday, 10 to 4 on Saturdays and 1 to 4 on Sundays. This will allow us to have staff in the building prior to opening and after close to be able to do shelving and pick lists and the things on the public floor that staff need to do that will prevent them from, you know, kind of clogging up the work when we're, we have public in the building. We will have capacity limits, so there will be someone at the door counting people if they come in. We will also have area capacity limits, so, you know, only so many people in the kids' room at a time. And if we get over that, we may have to stop people at the door. So we, we have been going through, we're making queuing areas, we have the spots on the floor, we have arrows, the PR is making signs of all kinds. We will be asking people, they will be required to wear a mask in the library. Anyone who cannot wear a mask will be asked to utilize curbside service or we will make another accommodation for them. So we will have a form on our website where people could request those accommodations in advance, or they can, or they can call, so that we can make those accommodations. We can do things like add them to our home services where they get delivery of their library material. We will continue curbside, so that will be huge, so that anyone who is not comfortable coming into the library yet will be able to utilize curbside service. For that reason, we decided not to go with the special entrance hours, because curbside will be available. So we, we've got the plan. We're working on it. We're working through all of the FAQs and information for staff, things like talking points, talking to the public. We're also looking at doing a public service announcement over the PA on a regular basis during the times that we're open, reminding people that they must wear a mask, that they need to social distance and to wash their hands, practice good hand hygiene. We've got lots of sanitizer stations that we will be deploying, that are deployed all over the library right now, so that people can, can sanitize their hands whenever they need to. We did, as you probably saw, we did receive the first round of results from that RHELME study about library materials and the COVID virus. So we were able to take our quarantine time from seven days to three days. That will be huge for us internally, but it will also mean that because we're continuing to quarantine items, anyone who uses an item or pulls an item off the shelf will be asked to return it to a re-shelving cart, and then those will go into quarantine. That's the best that, that we could come up with at this point. So we are hopeful that this goes well. So that will be our, our next big change. We have been every couple of weeks making, making changes and, and adding hours and adding services. So look for that to continue as we move forward and into these next phases.
What's the date for
Does anyone have any questions?
Phase three. You're going to announce it on Monday.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so anyone who is here can be in the know or listens to our, if they sit through the entire board meeting, they get the sneak preview, right? So it is Monday, July 6th, is our target reopen to the public date. We are, we're getting a, a larger number of staff into the building, starting on Monday, the 29th, so this coming Monday. Just, that's preparation, that's everybody getting ready, getting their areas ready, making sure that we have, the public areas are prepared for us to have staff, that staff are trained, they understand what our expectations are, and we're ready to go.
Can I ask what, and maybe, maybe staff have been asking this, or I'm not sure yet. I mean, because I know that my workplace has been dealing with this, and it's just kind of out there right now about how to deal with individuals who are not complying. Because, you know, it's a political issue, whether we should or not. And it's been really challenging, I know, for lots of organizations, public-facing organizations, to deal with it. And, you know, no one wants to be that person, I mean, the, like, confronter. So I'm just curious, kind of, well, how, how you're, how you're telling staff to handle it, or how they're, they're even, you know, thinking about how they might handle it themselves.
At this point, it is, you are required to wear a mask to enter the building. If you do not wear a mask, or if you remove your mask while you're in the building, you will be asked to leave. We have accommodations for people who cannot be in the building. And if you would like to utilize curbside service, you can continue to, you know, not wear a mask. You have options. But we will be requiring, you will be required to wear a mask if you are entering the library building. And it is up to the library to make their own rules, and we can enforce those rules. And anyone in violation of our rules and who is asked to leave and refuses to leave, they are now trespassing.
To give you two examples also, I've heard that Costco is really enforcing theirs. I haven't been there, but also I've heard multiple people use the example of no shoes, no shirt, no service, right? No shoes, no shirt, no face mask, same thing. So there have been comparable rules out there, and it shouldn't be that different.
Exactly. Yeah, you can't come in without clothes. You can't come in without a mask. That's, there are rules, and that's one of our rules at this time. We do know of at least one individual who is a regular at the library who has already given staff a hard time to wear about mask wearing. And so we are anticipating that at least that individual will be challenging to deal with.
Thank you.
Jen is working on the talking points for staff to be able to respond to questions and issues. And we actually did have a, a CIRC committee working on this earlier in the quarantine during the closing time, where they actually did some talking points for, for people. So we are utilizing that. It was a great exercise for the CIRC staff to be able to, to do some brainstorming around that.
Well, when I go to Target or Walmart or Jewel, they all have big signs on the door. And I think and assume and hope that you have the board solidly behind you on a zero tolerance approach to this, but we got to make sure nobody can say, oh, I didn't know.
So I will give you an example too. On Nextdoor today, someone posted that there was someone walking around Jewel for a long time without a face mask on, and 50 comments already happened on that post. I mean, it's just a hot topic, because some feel like you don't have to wear it, and some do, but there is just going to be so much commentary around it. And it's more about making the other patrons feel uncomfortable. That's what it boils down to, enforced.
Well, and frankly, our staff, our staff are adamant, many of them are very adamant about mask wearing and the health and safety for them and for our community. And that's really the message that we will keep repeating, is this is for everyone's health and safety.
Yeah, for all the people who don't want to go back into lockdown again, they'll be saying
We, we just have to have zero tolerance on that in order to support our staff, in order to be good leaders, and science backs us up. So
We were also talking, we were also talking about things like talking points for people who let their masks slip down and just, you know, the gentle reminders to, you know, wear, wear your mask. Oh, your mask is slipping, you know, we, we need everyone, for everyone's health and safety, we have to wear our masks properly. And it just keep, we figure if the staff just keeps reiterating the message to patrons, to each other, that it won't be, it won't be punitive or weird for them to point it out to someone if they're kind of just pointing it out to everyone along the way or making the, you know, the public service announcement, wear your mask, social distance and hygiene.
Thank you for doing that.
And Jen and the management team have been invaluable in this whole process. They've been just amazing in, in helping us to prepare for this next step and, and really for every step along the way. And the staff has been wonderful, so flexible, so willing to try new things and do things differently and make changes on the fly. They've really been amazing. And I particularly want a shout out to our curbside folks who've been doing running and relaying, who have braved the heat and the rain and the deluge and everything else and just kept going. We've reached new records on a regular basis with curbside. So that's just been really great. And if they can create curbside out of whole cloth, I think that they can manage to bring people into the library in a little bit different than we used to.
Remind me, are there any age limits?
Oh, yes, that's the other thing I forgot to say. Anyone under the age of 13 will have to have a parent, an adult with them, and the adult will be asked to monitor children's compliance with our health and safety standards at all times that they are in the library. We'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes. There won't be any, there's no seating. There is no play areas. There is no video game area. This is really a walk, the walkthrough library. It's a grab-and-go model. We don't want you hanging around. We will have computers available, but it will be one 45-minute appointment per person per day. And so, you know, that, those will be the only chairs on the public floor, will be at the, the computers. Everybody else, it's get your things and take them home to use them.
Any computers for kids? Probably not.
Actually, we will have a couple. We don't expect them to get a lot of use.
Yeah.
Julie, I know it was
We will be taking, all the iPads and touchscreen kids' computers will be taken out of service as well.
What is the capacity limit for the library? I know that was a question last time, because it was, you know, difficult to determine kind of how, what space is included in that capacity calculation. What, what did it end up kind of being in the end?
It's 100 in the public areas, and so that's kind of divvied up among the various spaces, which is why we're doing some area capacities in addition to the overall library capacity. Because if all 100 people tried to go into the kids' room at once, we still wouldn't be social distancing properly. So we are doing our overall building capacity as well as our area capacity.
Right. And I hope no one took my comment earlier to mean that I am not in full favor of the mandatory mask rule. I, well, my concern was more about staff and their comfort level with actually having to, like, be the mask police.
Import.
But it sounds like they're, yeah, it sounds like, you know, the ones that are doing it are, you know, on board. And I just, I just know sometimes it's awkward, you know, that conversation and preparing yourself to have that conversation. So I know the library staff are very professional about their customer service, so I'm, I'm glad that that's been thoroughly thought through. Terrific.
And let them
And we will be having, thank you. We will be having some all-staff meeting, an all-staff meeting and a meeting for the in-charge staff prior to opening, just to go over and make sure we've got all their questions answered and they feel prepared.
I have another question, and I'm actually not sure if you're able, if you're able to answer it. But I'm, I know the, there are new rules around FF-CRA, so the Families First Corona-whatever Response Act around employees needing to take care of children if they don't have daycare situations or family members who actually have COVID or, or, you know, that kind of thing. I, I wonder, will that impact staff going back at all, or is that kind of taken into account? And now you're kind of moving forward.
That's pretty much taken into account, and now we're moving forward. What we're finding is that for a, a number of our staff, like the childcare issues that they for a number of our staff, like the childcare issues that they've been having now, daycares are opening up, those sorts of things. So it is, the problem is kind of taking care of itself. So we are trying to be cognizant of what's going on with all of our different staff and all their various situations.
Good. Yeah, I know it's challenging to think about all the different variables to everyone's life at this point.
Got one other, Jonathan, can I jump in?
Absolutely.
I am always the optimist here, but just, do we have a fallback plan if necessary?
As to having to roll back?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. And that's one of those, it would be easy enough to just back up. And one of the things that we even talked about, we touched on today at our managers and supervisors meeting is that at some point, we may wind up having to close the library because somebody has tested positive. And so that is a very real possibility that a staff member at some point could test positive, and we would need to close the library, do the deep cleaning, and have anybody who was in direct contact with that person according to the CDC's guidelines, also self-quarantining, et cetera, and depending on the number of people affected, that could affect our ability to reopen.
Good.
And frankly, frankly, out here where I am, there is a local bank that has many branches that a number of the branches had to close for up to several weeks for that very reason, because they had staff members test positive, they had, they could not open because they did not have enough staff to staff that branch. So it is a very real possibility.
Okay, any additional questions or comments regarding the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan update? And if not, I think that what we're looking for here is to authorize the library director to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and within parameters of COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan as presented. Do we have a motion to approve that as presented?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Agenda Item 8D, authorizing the library director to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and within parameters of COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan as presented, that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gugani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes, okay, hit unmuted.
President Graver?
Yes, thank you very much, Caitlin. We have approved Agenda Item 8D. And we're now on to Agenda Item Number Nine, unfinished business. Doesn't look like there is any. So we're now on to Agenda Item 10, Library Director's Report. Julie?
All right. Yay. So the first thing I have is a shout out to our volunteer extraordinaire, Robert Rich, who has volunteered in the library's circulation department for 11 years. And Robert has just been an amazing volunteer. He does so much for us. He's just, he's one of the family, and unfortunately, he is going to have to retire from his volunteer job. But we wish him the best, and we understand why he can't be with us anymore. But we are really, really grateful for all the years and all the wonderful service that he gave to the library. We will be doing a garden walk brick for Robert, our volunteer extraordinaire. So, thank you, Robert. He was thinking about coming today, but I don't see him out there. So, let's see. And the, oh, dglibrary.org/life-2020. This is our new initiative, Life in 2020, our 2020 Memories Project. Now, it originally started as the COVID memories thing, but, you know, 2020 has kind of gone a little more than anyone ever expected to have happen in one year. So with all of the Black Lives Matter and the protests, and all of these things that have been going on culturally and health, we really decided that we needed to expand that project to incorporate all aspects of life in 2020. So we will be doing that kind of memories and trying to bring together the thoughts and the feelings of the community and make that available to everybody to see. So look for that, and look for our official announcement coming out on Monday about our reopening to the public. And then finally, I just want to mention that we will likely be having an in-person meeting in July. We're not quite sure how that will work or where that will be located because our meeting room is currently quarantine central for the items that have to be quarantined. So, yeah, it'll be interesting to come up with a location that we can have this group that will be properly socially distanced, but also that we are able to record effectively for our public, because as you know, we record these and we put them up on YouTube. So that will be our next challenge. We're worried about that down the road. But, yeah, we are kind of looking forward to being in the same room together. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks, Julie. We're now on to Agenda Item 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do you have any trustee comments or requests for information?
I guess I do.
Yes.
Someday you'll shoot me, but first of all, on that last comment, I think this has been a very productive meeting. And while we do want to meet face to face when it's appropriate, if it's not appropriate next month, I'm okay with this. Just an editorial comment. And I want to repeat that I strongly support the zero tolerance on masks. And if somebody gives you too much static, blame us, blame board. But I strongly believe in that. I was pleased to see, on a lighter subject, a reading list or, you know, an email come out, I think just today, an update on various things, including some staff picks of books and considering everything that's been going on in the last few weeks, and considering that this is Pride Month, I was very pleased to see a couple of reading lists put together by the staff. One for the LBHTQIA+ group, which is a very excellent resource list and excellent choice of books to include. And a second one, I can't remember exactly how it was titled, but it was a resource list for, well, the term that used to be kind of a negative term, and now has turned into a very positive one, and that is Black Lives Matter. That is a major issue in our world and in our country, trying to address the needs of this group after 400 years of discrimination. And our staff put together an excellent, excellent reading list on that subject. So I just want to applaud them for, while they're doing it and everything else, they did that this month. So, thank you. That's all I have.
And on that note, Dave reminded me, I was supposed to say this, because the whole George Floyd incident occurred immediately around the time of our last board meeting, I have not had a chance in a board meeting to thank you all for making a very strong public statement about the killing of George Floyd and about our support of our people of color, of the rights of everyone in the library, and to really reinforce that this is, our library is a place for everyone. And we are totally committed to the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Project that this board has contemplated previously, and we will be moving forward with that project. This is important work. We knew it before all of the protests and things began to happen, and it has simply reinforced the fact that systemic racism exists and that we are responsible for addressing it. And it's something that can't be put off anymore.
Thank you for saying that, and we need to keep that on the front burner. I am very proud to live in Downers Grove at the moment. Our village government, both the village council and the staff, put out a very, very strong statement right on the front of the website, the homepage of the website, that if you haven't already, you should. Our police department has been very good at both managing and, I don't want to say public relations, but our chief has been interviewed on Chicago television several times, and he has been very firm in saying that he uses the word murder in reference to these issues. He uses, he is totally disavows and abhors any form of discrimination, and also affirms the First Amendment rights of the protesters. As you know, some of our officers actually took a knee and with one of the smaller protests, and they very admirably managed the large protest that happened, what, two and a half weeks ago? I broke my quarantine to march in that, and I saw them up close and personal, and they did an outstanding job. They were not wearing riot gear. So I'm very proud to live in Downers Grove at the moment. But we're not done yet. We've got a lot of work to do. End of rant.
Thank you, Dave. I did see Dave at, and I don't know if you saw me, but I did see you at the rally. I was going to say hello, but there were some people who wanted to take their picture with you, so I couldn't, I didn't want to disturb you.
Well, I had a Black Lives Matter t-shirt on, that I never, I've had for several years. I didn't expect to be wearing it in Downers Grove, but there were a number of people who took their picture with me.
Okay, any additional trustee comments and requests for information?
I actually have two questions. I think one's already been addressed, so thank you, Julie. I was actually wondering about the diversity, equity, and inclusion and equity project, and kind of, I know we'd put it on pause right before the virus hit, so I'm glad to hear that you're thinking about, you know, kind of restarting that, especially in the light of current events. So I'm really glad to hear that. And my second comment or question was about, and maybe this is moot too, since we might be moving to an in-person meeting. But I was curious about the use of go-to-meeting for this meeting, since I know that the library has moved to Zoom for some of its internal and kind of public program meetings. I wasn't sure if that was an Illinois meetings kind of thing, what was required. I know I have a lot of trouble with go-to-meeting specifically, and I don't with Zoom. And so I was just thinking about the quality of our conversation. I didn't know if that was something we thought about.
We had actually started with go-to-meeting at the very beginning of all of this. We had go-to-meeting and not Zoom. And then as we got virtual programming off the ground, what they really found is they needed the Zoom webinar. Yes, and so that was really the impetus behind getting the Zoom account, and we're kind of making that transition.
Yeah, I'm a big Zoom fan. For all of their early security issues, I've come to deeply appreciate their product at this point in my life.
I was on two Zoom meetings before this one today.
It's like 90% of my day, just Zoom all the time.
Okay, any additional trustee comments or requests for information? All right, that means we're on to Agenda Item Number 12, which is adjournment, so I will hereby adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.